Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I will call the roll. Mr. Tankersley?
Present and here.
Ms. Sharpsher?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Here.
Ms. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
Thank you. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes of our last meeting on July eighth? Seeing none, those minutes will stand approved as written and distributed. For some communications, Mayor Hardman.
So we got a couple of firefighters to swear in, but before we do, we want to introduce you to one of our other employees at our fire department new to us. Tony, come on up. This is Tony Roth. Tony is our new emergency vehicle technician. And he comes to us with over twenty-eight years of skilled experience as a mechanic, twenty-three years at Caterpillar where he specialized in fire trucks and on-highway trucks. He holds dual master certifications in emergency vehicle service. And for the past five years, he's worked with the city of Mason Public Works maintaining a wide range of vehicles. And in his free time, this is always my favorite part, you know, it's like a dating site. He restores classic cars and spends time with his family. You got some family here with you, Tony? Hi Lori, thanks for joining. Glad to have you. Welcome aboard, Tony. Paul here. Now make a way down there. They all want to congratulate you and welcome you to put a face to the name. Is always part of the fun. Let's see, who's next up? Christopher Bays, come on down. So this is Christopher Bays. Christopher started his time in the fire service back in two thousand and five at Springfield Township in Clark County, not here in Hamilton County, where he still serves part-time. He has also worked at various places in the Dayton area, including Beaver Creek, Van Dalia, and Tip City. He is a paramedic, fire inspector, and emergency services instructor, and has taught at Clark State in the past. He currently lives in Troy with his wife Cory. Is Cory here? Wave your hand Cory. There we go. There are two dogs. They're not here, are they? Come on. We all love, we all love dogs. Prior to going into the fire service full-time, he's worked as a truck driver, as well as a laboratory technician at Wright Patterson Air Force Base, while he pursued a biology degree there at Wright State University. When the opportunity for a full-time job with Beaver Creek presented itself, he left Wright State before finishing his degree, maybe someday, that means we haven't finished the degree. Chris still works on the side driving a semi. Jeez, Chris, when do you have time to take care of the dogs and your wife? Works on the side driving a semi on a friend's farm, and he owns a roll-off dumpster company. In his free time, I don't know where he has any, he's an avid runner and regularly competes in half marathon and marathon races. Called an overachiever. All right, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Christopher Bays.
I, Christopher Bays.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the city of Sharon.
And the city of Sharon.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
Best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Hand off to the side there. Yeah, we'll do shakes, go all the way over there, just right there. That'll work. We'll do handshakes here in a little bit rather than after each one. All right, who we got next? Brayden, come on down. Brayden, is it Wild?
Yes.
All right. This is Brayden Wild. Brayden is honored to join the city of Sharonville. You must have written that, right? Is honored to join the city of Sharonville Fire Department. He brings one year of part-time experience with both the city of Blue Ash and Delai Township Fire Departments. He graduated with honors from the Scarlet Oaks Fire Academy in December of two thousand and twenty-three. He's set to begin paramedic school on August twenty-fifth. In his free time, he enjoys spending time with his family and weightlifting. Brayden is excited for the opportunity to grow with the department and to serve the Sharonville community. Got anybody here with you, Brayden?
I have my mom and my sister.
Mom and sisters. Congratulations. He's taking you to dinner when he gets off work. Raise your right hand and report after me. I, Brayden Wild.
I, Brayden Wild.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharon.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter and paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Let's see, next we have Joseph. All right, he told me before, Budakaboli? Utakaboli. I do, I see, I got it really close, right? Utakaboli. That it? All right, there we go. Joseph, but me. Joseph Utakaboli was born and raised in New Jersey. A name like that, what else could be, like, yeah, of course. Shortly after receiving a degree in physical education, he moved here to Cincinnati in April of two thousand and eighteen for love. Is that love here?
Yeah.
Joe, he went through fire AMT school at Scarlet Oaks and spent a few years working in private ambulance transport before beginning his first full-time fire position at Woodlawn Fire Department. During his three-year full-time employment with Woodlawn, he was also able to complete paramedic school. He began working part-time for Sharonville here in December of two thousand and twenty-four and then seized the opportunity for a full-time position in my community. He has been married for seven years and also has two dogs. His hobbies include bodybuilding, racquetball, like you Pokemon cards. I've got a bunch on my kids' floor, I'll let you know about them, all right? Raise your right hand and report after me.
I, Joseph Utakaboli.
I, Joseph Utakaboli.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharon.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
Office of firefighter/paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir. All right. Our last one is a promotion here. Adam, come on up. This is Adam Miller. Adam, I have information on Adam too. Lieutenant Adam Miller began full-time employment at Sharonville Police Department in February of two thousand and twenty. What did I say? We need some good police officers. Sharonville Fire Department in February of two thousand and twenty. While working full-time, Adam obtained his paramedic certification, finishing at the top of his class. While serving in Sharonville, he has also earned his fire inspector certification, completed both the fire apparatus operator and aerial truck operator program. Prior to his promotion, participated in the acting company officer program. Outside of his work, Adam lives in Harrison, Ohio with his wife Christie and their two young children. Even Auden, who turns three in September, and Archie, who is one. He is also especially grateful, oh, he's married with the youngest of five siblings and the only boy of four. With four married sisters and seventeen nieces and nephews. He is also especially grateful for the love and support of his mom, who has been a steady source of encouragement throughout his life. Adam is an avid Cincinnati sports fan. And enjoys cheering on the Reds, Bengals, and Bearcats. And in his free time, he enjoys playing golf, softball, and being with family and friends. Adam, it's been great having you. Let's raise your right hand. Let's get you officially sworn in in your due time. Repeat after me. I, Adam Miller.
I, Adam Miller.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
And the city of Sharon.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
That I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of lieutenant.
Of the office of lieutenant.
To which I have been appointed.
Which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
This is the best part. So for all these years of having to endure you, you have to hope she doesn't like draw blood. Congratulations, yes. Joseph, come on down, sir. Stand right next to him. Brayden. Christopher. Chief. Come on over here.
You want me in the photo?
No, I mean, probably. Paul, get him in there. All right, let's do a nice photo here. All right. Family, family want to get some pictures before we move on to the next thing? This is your option too. Come on up, family. Get some pictures with your, with your loved ones here. All right, while they get congratulated by the rest of council, I understand that Ms. Knight has a presentation she would like to make to the chief while all these great firefighters are here.
Amy, would you want to join me down here, please? On a cold February or March evening, after our council meeting, Amy and I decided to sit and chat for a long, long time. And as we were getting into our cars, we noticed the chief was waiting to make sure we got into our cars. So tonight, we have a new award. It's called the Good Gentleman Award. So Chief, come on over. And we'd like to present this to you. Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
I won't mention at my next mayor's meeting, he was there saying, make sure those ladies leave a lot earlier than what they are. Just kidding.
I was gonna say, I saw your car, I saw your car getting jumped.
Well, thank you all very, congratulations to all of you guys. If you're not working tonight, you better be taking your family out to dinner if you haven't already. And if you are working, I'm sure you'll find a way to do that later. So we're glad to have you all. We've got, definitely have one of the best, if not the best, fire department in the region. And it's because of all you great guys back there and ladies and all of you great folks that we just swore in tonight. So thank you all for your service to Sharonville. You're welcome to stick around as long as you'd like. You're also welcome to take off. We won't, you won't hurt our feelings, so. All right. So we also have with us tonight our friends from BAP's charities. Always glad to see them. And they have a presentation that they would like to make to the city council. So if you all would like to come on up.
Thank you, as always, for having us here today. We'll just give them a couple more minutes.
It echoes and echoes and echoes.
It's okay. I know my days.
Thank you.
It's like for pictures and everything. Okay, we can get started. Good evening, President Council, Paul Coulter, Mayor Kevin Harmon, council members and other fellow community members. I'm Dr. Grishma Patel, a practicing dentist, mom, and a very proud BAPS volunteer. I, it is an honor to be here and have the opportunity to represent BAPS as an organization and share its values and vision with you guys. As you know, most of it, but still, we kind of reiterate a few things. So over the past fifty years in North America, BAPS has helped preserve Indian culture and values, providing an environment where families and individuals connect with their roots. Through BAPS Youth Program, children not only learn about their faith, but they also learn about that your inner peace comes with selfless service. As they grow, they gain confidence in making choices which are rooted in these values of giving and selfless service, ensuring that they will be a very responsible, emotionally intelligent, and compassionate citizens of the world. For fifty years, BAPS has been shining light, promoting service, cultural preservation, and being an advocate of peace and unity. From organizing health fairs to providing disaster relief, BAPS has shown us what it means to serve with humility and dedication. The volunteers, whether they are young or old, they cherish the spirit of Seva, which is selfless service, contributing their time, talent, and resources. This commitment to goodness and service nurtured in each generation lies at the heart of BAPS' mission. In the summer of two thousand and twenty-five, we had our annual walkathon with the motto of, "In the joy of others, lies our own." That walk supported Shop with the Cop by Sharonville Police Department. Oh, okay. The funds wish to provide a hope to children in our community during the holiday season and help them believe in magic. Here in Cincinnati, we started the outreach activities in year two thousand and two. We started, it's like, starting the activities in someone's basement, moved to a warehouse, I like the BAPS drive, and we were able to build a beautiful pinkstone temple in year two thousand and fifteen. So this year, two thousand and twenty-five, marks the tenth year, tenth year anniversary to the inauguration of the temple. On behalf of BAPS Hindu Temple in Cincinnati, we are honored to invite all of you to celebrate this momentous occasion with us, the tenth anniversary celebration of Cincinnati's temple's dedication and service to the community. The past decade in Cincinnati has been a testament to our commitment to fostering cultural understanding, spiritual growth, and community service. As a symbol of our dedication to these values, the anniversary celebration will feature a series of religious ceremonies, cultural performances, and community gathering, bringing together members of various faith and background. This landmark event will be held from September twelve to fourteen at BAPS Cincinnati Temple. On September twelfth, we will be having Women's Day Celebration, a day to celebrate echoes of our soul and uplifting event by women for women. And on September thirteenth, we're gonna have a devotional musical evening, a symphony of devotion and harmony. And on September fourteenth, we're gonna end with a grand celebration followed with fireworks. So we would be honored to have you attend this milestone and would be grateful for your participation in the celebration. We would be deeply honored to welcome all of you, as we know, the city has always supported us in all the renovation and the lighting that is provided by you guys. And it's like the support that we have got step by step has only helped us to move further and further each year. And that's how we are able to provide to the community. Also, we believe that all souls contain a spark of divinity. So we will be humbly welcoming the divinity in you while you join us for this celebration. Together, may we continue to build a community where all individuals feel welcome, where diversity is celebrated, and where hope shines brighter. Thank you. Thank you all. And also, given permission, may I please welcome President Council, Paul Coulter, Mayor Kevin Hardman, and Police Chief Jim Nesbit, if they are here and we can, we will be more than happy to offer them our invitation for the tenth anniversary celebration and also the fundraising check from the walkathon. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We are here to listen and support and all the council members. Please do come. I will make sure that everyone gets like. That's why it's cool. That way you guys can.
Wait for it, Jay. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody, for the charity. Thank you for shorting Shop for Morning, Shop with the Cop.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully we invite you out when they do it.
Yes.
Oh, yes, great. Got your good drive back.
Great. Thank you all very much. Look forward to another ten years.
Yes.
All right. The last item I have is mayor's court report for the month of July. We had total revenue for the period of twenty-one thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, which is, keeps us about twenty thousand dollars over where we were in this period of last year. So that's always good, I guess. People aren't doing the things they're supposed to be doing, so they're getting fined for not doing them. So, and our folks are collecting those fines. But hopefully they'll stop doing the things they're not supposed to do and we'll be poorer when it comes to this report. But the full report, if you want to see it, is in your minutes from the meeting. So that is all I have to report for the evening.
Thank you. Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. A couple of things before the legislation. First, Carrie Rabe asked that I publicize that there's going to be a celebration of life for Dewey Angel, who was a council member from nineteen eighty-five through nineteen ninety-five on October fourth from two to five at Already Cafe. I didn't have the pleasure of knowing Mr. Angel, but just trying to publicize and get the word off for that. Second, about a week or so after our last council meeting, Third Eye Brewing Company competed in the National U.S. Open Beer Championship, and they were recognized as the Brewery of the Year nationwide in the two thousand to five thousand barrel category. Three of their beers received gold medals, the Jelly Brain, the Double Astral, which is a chocolate oatmeal stout, and the Dark Aura, which is an Imperial Chocolate Peanut Butter Stout. So kudos to them for, for that. Legislation-wise, there's only one item on the agenda tonight. Chief Nesbit's talking outside, so I'll handle that. We are having some issues with people parking on our recently completed shared-use path. I gave an example in the packet of somebody who is fully on the, on the path up by Colonial Gardens just before that. There was really no teeth in the ordinances before tonight's legislation. They've been handling issues informally whenever the, the department has seen them. Tonight's legislation, however, would give them some teeth to potentially cite people for doing that. That's it, unless there are some questions.
All right, thank you. My report, thanks to the city council and city staff members who volunteered at Sharon Fest at the adult beverage booth to help raise money for the Sharonville Community Fund. I'm not exactly sure how much was raised yet, but that's a very important fund for the, for the city. So thank you for your participation, for those of you who were there. And then as a reminder, we are off our summer schedules, so our next meeting, two-a-month meeting, will be on August twenty-sixth. That's it for my report. Clerk of Council, Ms. Buhy.
No report.
Thank you. Law Director, Mr. Lippert?
Nothing to report. I'm happy to take questions. Legal questions, nothing about, I'm new here, but that's all I have.
Santa Law, is that your new name? All right, thank you. At this time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? Mr. Schmidt, you finally returned and you have. Mr. Schmidt, you finally returned and you have nothing, okay. Thank you. Council Committee, uh, Community Development, Mr. Tankersley.
Thank you. Just a reminder, tomorrow evening at 6:30 will be the BZA meeting, then at 7 o'clock, community, uh, yeah.
Planning Commission.
Planning Commission, yeah, brain fart. Uh, start at 7:00 here in the chambers.
Thank you. Budget and Finance and Project Eversite, Mr. Cook.
Thank you. Uh, no report for both committees, but I will work with Mr. Lucas and Mr. McKeon, and I will notify all of council when our next meeting will be. Thank you.
Thank you. Community Services, Mr. Lovett.
Good evening. Uh, our next Community Services meeting will be next week, uh, on the 20th, 4:00 p.m. Um, we're gonna be in the, uh, Community Development Office, so thank you.
Your report's out on file, as you normally say?
I didn't have.
Oh, okay.
The report will be next time.
All right. Under assistance, Ms. Knight.
Uh, yes, tonight, I would like to honor the Parks and Recreation Department. The flowers outside the rec center are so beautiful, I don't know if anybody's been to the pool or the rec center. Um, I really love the sunflowers that are down by the pool entrance, so I just thought I'd give a shout out to them because they've done a really good job. Um, and it's a very good welcoming to anyone who comes to our pool or our rec center. And I was talking to Randy, and he said that they got some plans, so, uh, doing a little bit more, so it should be exciting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. Uh, the next meeting of Law and Public Safety will be on the 19th, 5:00 p.m., Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, rules, suspension motions for the first and only reading for immediate effectiveness of ordinance 2025-38-E. Is there a motion for rule suspension for the ordinance as read? Mr. Lovett, thank you for the first, and Mr. Cox, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. All right, the rule suspension carries. Unfinished business, Ms. Buhy.
All right. Second reading of emergency ordinance 2025-35E, the amended emergency ordinance 2025-35E, directing the Safety Service Director to repave Fortney Lane and declaring an emergency.
Thank you. New business, Ms. Buhy.
First reading of emergency ordinance 2025-37E, adopting preliminary legislation from the Ohio Department of Transportation and declaring an emergency. That was just a first reading, sorry. Yep, you're reading on me. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2025-38E.
Thank you. Is there a motion for ordinance 2025-38-E? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Mr. Schmidt, thank you for the second. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Tankersley?
Yes.
Mrs. Sharpsher?
Yes.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Lovett?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2025-38E has been approved.
Thank you. Uh, at this time, final time, are there any residents desiring to be heard before council this evening? Seeing none. Are there any other matters to be heard before council this evening? Ms. Sharpsher?
I just want to, uh, let everyone know, in case you didn't, school starts this week on Thursday, so mind your speeds. Lots of little kids walking to school in Sharonville, and also the path will be closed. That was announced on the city website, that the walking path from the cemetery to the elementary school, we've closed. I forget the dates. But anyway, it's on the city website.
Wednesday, February.
Okay. So there you go. Thank you. And have a wonderful school year, all of Princeton and all Princeton residents.
Thank you. Mr. Lippert?
Thank you. Uh, I neglected to mention, we need to schedule a records commission meeting, so after a quick consultation with Mr. Lucas, that's gonna be on September 9th at 6:30. Um, are you okay making notice, the department has? All right, so, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other matters? Ms. Knight?
Yes, um, with a heavy heart, I have to announce that, um, Annette Creek Mason-Arn Christ has passed away. Uh, you know, she is, uh, she was really the head of the VFW Auxiliary, and she did everything she could to help our kids learn about, um, the veterans and everything involved with it. So her celebration of life will be August 16th from 1:00 to 3:00 at the Stanley Strivers on 7140 Plainfield Road. So I just thought everybody would like to know that. She was battling some young lung cancer and having a really difficult time with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other matters? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Tankersley, thank you for the first. Ms. Sharpsher, thank you for the second. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no? Thank you, we are adjourned.